Om Tat Savitoh Rambaram Rupam Jyothi Parasya Dhimahim Yannap Satyana Deepayet Satyana Deepayet Om Tat Savitoh Rambaram Rupam Jyothi Parasya Dhimahim Yannap Satyana Deepayet Satyana Deepayet Om Tat Savitoh Rambaram Rupam Jyothi Parasya Dhimahim Yannap Satyana Deepayet Satyana Deepayet Om Tat Savitoh Rambaram Rupam Jyothi Parasya Dhimahim Yannap Satyana Deepayet Satyana Deepayet
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Namme Anayvarayum Orunginaithe Indha Life Divine Pailvatharkana Indha Vayipinai Namakayaarpaduthik Kudutthulaa Shyannayakkum Bhagwanakkum Namadhananriyayum Panakkatiyum Avargaladhu Porpaadangalil Samarpipppoom Ittaranathil Nammanathil Thoondrum Ooruyenathiyum Naam Peshum Ooruvathayayum Avargalakku Kaanikyaaga Samarpipppoom Anayvarukkum Maalaywanakkam Life Divine La Tunti First Chapter Patthithruthukon The Ascent of Life Patthithruthukon Pona Session Varikyon Paragraph Nine Undu Completea Patthon Paragraph Ten La Undu Original Text Undu Sundar Sir Padichitaru Explanation Undu First Portion Patthon Irundhanu Meendu Oorudarava Indha Vaara Undu Indha Session La Undu The First Part of Explanation La Undu Pola Ena Pona Darava Undu Konjam Avasarmahaada Nambavandu Padithamaari Enakku Oru Feeling Irkke So The First Part Of Explanation Nambe Neeradiyaha Ullapola Idhu Monajana Adutta Oru Paragraph Poda Indha Chapter Motivu Perikhinradhu Synopsis La Undu Nambe Fulla Recall Pannila Adhanala Ipan Nambe Undu Pona Vaara Enna Patthon Karidhiyum Synopsis La Namblala Namal Recall Nineve Kora Mudiyum Adhanala Ipo Neeradiyaa Nambe Undu First Part of Tenth Paragraph Ullapola Nambe Padikringla Yaaravudhe?
Padikittumasa?
Padigmadam Please.
We have seen that in the first stage of life There is rigidity and division of matter. Matter is under subjection to mechanical force. Force dominates. Matter is subjected to something which is not self. In the second stage, there is consciousness of limitation and the struggle to possess. There is struggle to master both self and then not self. In the course of development to the third status, This struggle is transformed into fulfillment and harmony. Here the principle of association and love comes in. There is recognition that the not self, that is other than oneself, is a greater self. There is a consciously accepted submission to its law and need. There is an increasing impulse of aggregate life to observe the individual. The individual possesses the life of others as his own. It takes all that the life of others has to give him as his own. This fulfills the opposite impulse of individual possession. Thank you, sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. Bhagavan Undu Indha Chapter Mudhuvi Lifeunodaya Parinamorachiunodaya Moonruh Mukkemana Kattangala Vilakkuhinradhar Mudal Kattathila Undu Adu Undu Oru Sadapurul Adu Daang Undu Sadapurul Saardhaya Ekamahataan Vaaruvayirkinradhu Irindavudinilela Thannay Nilaniruthikollavum Indha Prabanjathila Matra Amaypugalai Thannool Vaangi Thannay Perkikkolvaththo Virkikkolvadhu Intthahaya Seyalbathigala Daan Vaaruvinirindavudinileaya Irkku The Monraavudinileyalada Manam Enginradha Amaypu Velivarekinradhu The Monraavudinilei Vandhavadan Ennanadakindradhu Enradharan Indha Mudal Irindanilegal Ke Edhiraana Nilegal Mudal Irindanilegal La Undu Ennanakurayhalaha Irndado Adellam Munram Nilela Nirayhalaha Nirayvetrapadigintran Indha Munram Nilei Adalada Namirkinradhu Andha Kattathila Daan Namirkinradhu The Monraavudinileayum Eirdiyana Nileyalala Nam Daankavudinilei Nokki Thaan Poikondi Irkinradhu Indha Bhagavan Indha Mudal Nileay Pettrikurumborudhe The inert incapacity of atomic existence To possess itself, the subject, to possess itself, The subjection of the material individual to the not self Belongs to the first status of life. Is the first status, Irindavudhe The consciousness of limitation and the struggle to possess, To master both self and the not self is the type of the secondary status. The first stage of life La Patthon Obdina Illame Sadapurulay Charandha Ekamahataan Irkinradhu Oru Irhyatanmi Rigidity Irkinradhu Illame Undu Thannathaniyaa Kaanappadigintran Division Isu Isu Mudal Nileyala Irkku
Sir, Chinnadhu Not Selfrath Ennasa Ringam Meenbandrang
Not Self Nammat Tavaramathavukkala Na Na
Matra Porulkala Ado Olakame Ennay Tavaramatra Veyinathama
Ennay Tavara Illame Not Self
Sir, okay, thank you sir.
Ennay Tavaramatray Matray Illame Not Self Padangna The Jadapurul Undu Oru Iyandragadyana Andha Shaktikke Undu Kattupattu Irkinradhu Indha Shakti Daan Pradhanamaa Irkinradhu Adalal Andha Nileyala Patthobdina Andha Sadapurul Undu Thannay Allada Unruthu Oru Thannay Tha 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 Thaan Allada Unrin Shaktikke Aduk Nirpandikappattum Kattupattum Irkinradhu Isu Sadavi Sadavulakal Sadaviyala Sarandha Oru Amaypaha Irkinradhu Isu Dan Mudal Kattam Vaaruvula The Irindavudhe Stage La Patthon Obdina
Sir, Anthe Mudal Kattathil Thirupichellanga Sir, please, please Mansala Vaankamodila
Parol, parol This Mudal Kattam Karidhu Illame Undu Materials, Material Phenomenon Illame Sadapurulay Sarandha Ekam Daan Illame Anga Sadapurulay Sarandha Ekathila Patthon Obdina Andha Edathila Undu Andha Force Thaan Dominate Panno Andha Sadapurul Undu Enna Panudhu Obdina Oru Helplessa Andha Shaktikke Undu Thannay Uppaduthikolikindradhu Adha Matter is under subjection to mechanical force Enna Karanona Andha Edathila Force Thaan Dominate Panudhu Matter Undu Oru Helplessa Arkkudhu Andha Edathila Indha Undu The Sadapurul Undu Obdina Thaan Allada Unruthu Thannay Oru Kattupaduthikolikindradhu Ena Shakti Abdingaridhu Completea Undu Matter Matterunodaya Ohn Idhala Panradhalala Oru Shakti Daan Undu Matter Andha Sadapurulay Kattupaduthikindradhu Adalal Sadapurulukkenre Oru Adhanudaya Vidhiyandriyanga Kadeyadhu Illame Weeroru Vidhiyaladhu Aalapadigintradhu Oru Shaktiyasandha Oru Ekam Oru Force Angas Material Force Vale Sayikindradhu Andha Edathila Andha Sadapuruladharu Thannay Kattupaduthikolikindradhu Isu Dan Undu Mudal Niley Mudal Nileyala Undu Force Dominates Andha Edathila Undu Matter Undu Oru Winnertha Arkkavala Da Oru Silertratanmai La Oru Irhyatanmai La Irkinradhu Indha Irindavudhe Irindavudhe Kattathila Irindavud Kattathila Andha Vaaruvu Thannay Mellemellem Velipaduthikolikindradhu Appidi Panndumborudhe Enna Onna Indha Vaaruvu Thannay Nilaniruthikollavendu Undha Prabanjathila Illeti Indha Vaaruvu Angaridhu Oru Staramana Amaypaha Irkkaadhu Adhanala Da Undu Indha Con- There is consciousness of limitation and the struggle to possess. Undh- Andha Vaaruvu Matra Vatray Thannatha Thannatha Akikondhu Thannudaya Irippay Nilaniruthikollaa Andha Vaaruvu Muyachikindradhu Isu Dan Irindavudhe Kattam There is a struggle to master both self and then not self. Thannayum Aalamekki Andha Chivya Andha Thaniappattamaypugal Thannayum Aalamekki Konduvarikindradhu Adhiponru Thaan Allada Matra Amaypugalayum Thannudaya Aalamekki Konduvara Muyachikindradhu Isu Undu Vaaruvinodaya Irindavudhe Kattam Isu Ella Saavaranangal Vilangirangal Elathilime Indha Indha Seyalbadu Neerjinkindradhu Isu Undu Irindavudhe Kattam Indha Irindavudhe Kattathila Oru Porattam Daarikindradhu Vaaruvu Thannay Nilaniruthikollu Kolvadarkaha Matra Amaypugalay Thaan Eduthukondoo Matra Amaypugalin Meedu Thaan Adigaram Siluthyo Thannudaya Nelamiyay Sarepadduthikollaa Muyachikindradhu Isu Irindavudhe Niley The Monraavudinileyala Patthon Obdina Monraavudinileyala Manam Enginradha Amaypu Undu Pradhanamaa Gaseyalbadha Aaramik- Aaramikindradhu Indha Patthon Obdina The Irindavudinileyala Irkkakoodi Andha Porattam Porattam Enbadhu Edhuvaha Marikindradhu Thiruvurmaatrum Urumaatrum Adahinradhu Enradharan Oru Nirayverudal Fulfillment Appram Harmony Otthisayuvu Irindavudinileyala Edhella Undu Edhurnilegaha Kaanappattado Adellamay Undu Oru Positivea Undu Monraavudiniley- Monraavudinileyala Urumaatrum Adahinradhu Isu Dan Vaaruvinodaya Payanamindra Bhagavan Kurippidigindradhar The Darwin's Theory La Enna Panang Abdina Yes?
Abdina Manam Vandhathukaprantha Andha Harmony and Fulfillmentame Vandhada Aduk Munnaala Tactla Kadeyadhu Liya? Vaaruvaha Malandapodu Aduk Kadeyadhu Mind Vandhathukaprantha Harmony and Fulfillment Amongst Self and Not Self Vandhada
Manam Enginradhu Vanda Apprantha Undu Indha Association With Other Association With Other Idhngaridhu Oru Pradhanamaa Kaanappattadhu Ipo Undu Selai Vilangirang- Vilangirangalitthakoodave Vilangirangalitthi Indhalakamika Idhda Indha Gunangallan Kaanappadigintradhu
Manam, Manam
Kaka, Kaka Patthon Obdina Kaka Undu Matthayinang Adhunodi Matra Idhala Unavapakshundikitthu Thaan Onnu Adellam Kirikindradhu Illay Marukkala Ana Bhagavan Enna Solikindradha Enradharan The Manam Enginradha Amaypu Vanda Parakadha Oru Conscious Momentaanadakindradhu Adellam Undu Pona Daravae Patthon Adellam Undu Nature compels them to do, to act like that. Nature compels them to express the love Andha Animals La Irkkreni Pona Daravae Kettinga Ipa Ye Animals La Irkkal Andhu Undu Ye Uyandha Anbu Ennam Eduthukkodadhu Koda Kettinga Liya?
Amma, amma
Amma, Aduk Mukkemana Reason Enna Na Manushankitthu Thaan Undu Psychic Being Irkku Andha Psychic Being Manushan Tha Irkkunada Manushan Manushan Molemaha Velipadigindra Anbu Undu Oru Uyandha Anbaha Marivadigindradhu Liya? Vilangakalittham Psychic Being Karidhu Rudimentary Stage La Thaarki Oru Miheypatthal Alavala Kaanappadhanamaa Kaanappadigintradhu
Rudimentalakam
Ah, Isu Adhe Poldha Indhiyapathon Na Oru Yertain Kattayathirukkooda Andha Edathila Oru Harmony Irkku Ipa Ooruyenangalam Adukkulla Oru Otthu Oru Ottrumay Earpaduthikondu Vaargintanana Adu Ye Abdi Vaargintanana Enradhu Adu Yertain Kattayathirkayaal Oru Nirpandikappattu Oru Oru Amaypaha Oru Seyalbadha Irkinradhu Ana Manam Enginradha Amaypu Vanda Parakadha Adu Undu Oru Conscious Momentaaha Marikindradhu Manushan Vandhanan Anikrara Thannudaya Narimatharam Pathada Abdingra Manushan Vandhavane Aunkittan Andha Psychic Being One Developpaidudhu Aavandu Matthay Thannudaya Thannudaya Selfu Oda Matra Selfu Daan Undu Uyandha Selfu Angara Uyandha Ummyalavundu Unarra Aavandu Appramadhu Thaan Vandhu Indha Prabanjathila Undu Oru Thannay Kadandha Unruthu Irkinradhu Indha Prabanjathila Abdingra Apdingra Ummya Manushan Manam Enginradha Amaypu Vanda Appradha Unarra There is something beyond himself Apdingra Ummya Manidhan Manam Vanda Parakadha Indha Ummya Ariyapadigintradhu Adu Daan Yamukya Ngavana Thilpolavanu Nambe Bhagavanam Adha Solikindradhar
Thank you sir.
Manusha Vandhu Enna Unarikindran Enradharan Manam Enginradha Amaypu Vanda Parakadha Aav Enna Unarikindran Enradharan Thannakkum Miriyam Oru Amaypu Prabanjathil Irkindradhu There is something beyond himself in the universe Apdingra Apdingra Oru Mukkemana Oru Radical Thinking Aavun Earpaduthu Adu Eppa Earpadigindradhu Enradharan Manam Enginradha Amaypu Earpatta Parakadha Aavun Eerpavonparadhu Adu Varikha Indha Edhella Kadeyadhu In the second stage, first stage La Edhella Kadeyadhu Manam Enginradha Amaypu Vanda Parakadha Indha Edhella Vandhu Pradhanamaa Oru Meembatte Kaanappadigintradhu
Poorinidhu sir
Indha Undu Indha Undu Indha Monraavudinileyala Indha Koottaha Iruttal Principle of Association and Love Comes in Anbu Oru Koottu Vaargke Koottaha Seyalbadhal Idhukkala Undu Indha Idhu Undu Pradhanamaa Pradhanamaa Amaypaha Seyalbadha Amikindradhu Aray Innoora Mukkemaha Manidhan Enna Unarikindran Enradharan Thannay Thannay Sarada Matra Amaypugal Thannay Vida Uyandhamaypugalaha Karthikindran There is a recognition that the not self is a greater self En- Isu Dan Isu Dan Manidhan Manidhan Vanda Unarikindran Manidhan Vanda Uyernelayala Matra Anmakal Undu Thannudaya Anmakali Vida Uyandha Anmakal Enra Oru Uyar Sindenayay Manidhan Ettukindran Adhe Pola Indha Ootumatha Vaargke Undu Thani Manudha Vaargkey Thannool Vaitukolikindradhu Thani Manudha Vaargkey Undu Undu Vilakkala Ootumatha Vaargke Thani Manudha Vaargkey Thannool Vaitukolikindradhu Adhe Pala Oru Thani Manudhan Enna Sayikindran Enradharan Matra Oruvaargkeyam Thannudaya Thannudaya VaargkeyKul Aavun Amittukolikindran Oru Inclusive Ness Irkinradhu Exclusive Ala Inclusive Ness Earpadigintradhu Adhe Pala Matra 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 Orunudaya Vaargkeyli Irundu Matra Amaypugal Indhu Aavun Edhayala Thannakupayanulladhaa Irkuma Aday Aavun Manidhan Eduthukolikindran Liya? Isu Undu Irindavudinileyala Vaargke Vaaruvu Undu Oru Kuruttatharamaha Irkinradhu Oru Enna Sayikindradhu Enradharan Oru Oru Je- Oru Jeevan Matra Jeevanay Undu Valimiyaha Akkaramithu Thannay Perkikkolikindradhu Struggle to possess Adu Undu Irindavudinileyala Irkku Ana The Monraavudinileyala Eppidi Irkka Obdina Oru Voluntarya Arkkudhu Voluntarya Vandhu Thannay Vaargikolikindradhu Matra Oruvaargkeyam Indhu Thaan Eduthukolikindradhu Isu Undu Bhagavan Enna Solikindradha Enradharan This fulfills the opposite impulse of individual possession. The individual possession Thannatha Akikolvadhu Enbadhu Unodiya Edhurnileyaha Isu Seyalpettu Andha Mudal Nileyala Ennanakurayhaladhrukkodhu Adi Nirayaha Mar- Nirayaha Urumaatrum Adahinradhu Isu Daan Parinamorachi La Bhagavan Undu Indha Indha Maatrangallan Adiverikindradhu Enra Bhagavan Kurippidigindradhar Edhella Vandhu Edhurnilegala Irkinradhu Indha Undu Fulfillaayudhu Fourth Stage La Fulfilla Third Stage La Fulfillaayudhu Fourth Stage La Complete Fulfillment Kadakkidhu Kadakkidhu Adinoke Thaan Vaaruvu Payanittukondi Irkinradhu The second part of explanation Polama Nambe
Padikva sir?
Padigmadam.
This relation of mutuality between the individual and the world he lives in Can be complete and secure only when there is love and association established between individual and individual and between aggregate and aggregate. Man strives to possess himself by self-affirmation and freedom. By association of association and love, fraternity, comradeship, he gives himself to others. He creates a balance between these two opposites through his ideals of harmonious equilibrium, justice, mutuality and equality. The efforts of man to achieve these objectives are really predetermined in its lines to solve the original problem of nature. This is the very problem of life itself. These two opposites, that is individual freedom versus submission to collectivity, present themselves in the very foundations of life in matter. The resolution of these opposites is attempted by the higher principle of mind. Mind alone can find the road towards the achievement of harmony. Yet the harmony itself can only be found in a power supplemental still beyond us. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you madam, thank you. Yeah Bhagavan Undu Moonruh Mukkemana Oru Mukkemana Karthikle- Karthikkurikindradhar The Irindu Edhre Edhiraana Nilegalakurikindradhar Appram Monraavudiniley Oru Otthisayvananile The Edhre Edhiraana Niley Enna Obdina All the difficult effort of man towards the harmonization of self-affirmation and freedom by which he possesses himself With association and love, fraternity, comradeship, in which he gives himself to others Isu Irindavudiniley Monraavudhe His ideals of harmonious equilibrium, justice, mutuality, equality, by which he creates a balance of these two opposites Are really an attempt inevitably predetermined in its lines to solve the original problem of nature, the very problem of life itself By the resolution of the conflict between the two opposites which present themselves in the very foundations of life in matter. Isu Enna Mukkemana Edhobdina Vaaruvu Eppa Thoondriyado Appave Vande Andha Oru Thani Jeevanunodaya Survival Thani Jeevanunodaya Sudandiram Irindavudhe Oru Ootumatha Amaypugalana Oru Otthisayuvu Ootumatha Amay- 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 Amikka Ootumatha Thaal Ootumatha Thil Amikkaappattu Oru Vaaruvu Isu Indha Ootumatha Amaypirkkum Thani Manudhanakkum Idail Eppurudhume Andha Thani Jeeviyathirkkum Idhar Kedail Eppurudhume Moranbadu Irundukondi Irkindradhu Vaaruvu Eppurudhu The Material Level Aaramchetho Appurudhurunde The Irindukkum Idailana Na Moranbadu Irundukondi Irkindradhu Yertay Enna Sayikindradhu Enradharan Indha Moranbaday Otthisayvaka Thaan Uyandrukondi Irkindradhu Adhan Adhanudaya Andha Uththisayvaka Thal Enkintra Yelekkaayavukkithaan Yertayum Seyalbattukondi Irkindradhu Enra Karthi Bhagavan Kurippidigindran Ipo Oru Manidhanodaya Thani Manudhan Irkindran Thani Manudhan Irkindran Aavunisa Aavun 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 Ulakathay Sarandha Aavun Vaargindran Oru Ootumatha Amaypirkkindradhu Indha Uravu Vande Oru Paraspara Uravaha Irkana Oru Thani Manudhan Maathramay Aavunodaya Nalathirkaa Irkamidiyadhu Adhiponru Oru Thani Manudhanodaya Nalathay Undu Urandalli Vittu Adu Ootumatha Amaypum Seyalbadha Mudiyadhu Isu Ke Idayla Vande Oru Paraspara Uravu Irkavendop Indha Paraspara Uravu Vande Eppurudhu Vande Oru Nerandaramaha Nerandaramaha Irkkum Eppa Vande Oru Puranathavam Perum Enradharan Indha Oru Thani Manudhanakkum Innoora Thani Manudhanakkum Eppa Vande Oru Anbu Earpaduk Earpadigindradhu Eppa Vande Oru Andha Oru Oru Ottrumay Oru Oru Otthisayuvu Earpadigindradhu Appurudhu Adu Maathramla Oru Koottamaypirkkum Innoora Koottamaypirkkum Adhi Irindakkum Idailayum Patthon Obdina Adhi Irindakkum Idailayum Indha Anbum Oru Ottrumayum Ondraha Seyalbadhalum Indha Amsam Irkkumborudhu Da Indha Oru Idhu Undu Indha Thani Manudhanakkum Andha Onik Sarandha Andha Andha Koottana Amaypirkkum Idailana Uravu Vande Appurudhu Thaan Adu Puranathavam Perum Abdingraang Thani Manudhanodaya Nalathay Porandalli Vittu Oru Ootumatha Amaypum Seyalbadamidiyadhu Adhiponru Oru Ootumatha Amaypun Nalanay Porandalli Vittu Oru Thani Manudhan Seyalbadamidiyadhu Indha Karthi Dan Bhagwaninga Kurippidigindradhar Thani Manudhanaha Irkkumborudhu Manudhan Enna Sayikindran Enradharan Aav Thannay Thaan Andha Affirm Manikrara Thannay Urdhisayidhu Kolikindran Aavunodaya Sudandiram Vande Aavunakku Oru Mukkemana Amsamaga Aavun Aavunodaya Sudandritthay Nadaikindran Isu Oru Pakko Indhoor Pakko Matra Oruvaargkeyam Vande Oru Inaynde Seyalbadigindran Association Matra Oruvaargkeyam Vande Anbaha Iruttal Oru Fraternity Comradeship Oru Natpurumay Kuldhal Isu Daam Oru Pakkam Pantrava Oru Pakka Thaan Thannudaya Niley Nirayna Nilaniruthikolikindran Sudandramaha Irkindran Matra Oru Pakka Vande Matra Oruvaargkeyam Vande Koottaha Irkamuyeligindran Anbu Siluthikindran Oru Parasparam Natpurumayil Pa- Paagikindran Isu Irindemi Vande Edhre Edhiraana Nileyakal Liya? Thani Manudha Sudandram Oru Pakka Irkindradhu Adhe Samaythalai Matra Koottana Amaypugalodin Seyandhu Seyalbadhal Enkintra Niley Irkindradhu Isu Irindakkun Nileyala Undu Aav Vande Enna Sayikindran Enradharan Oru Otthisayuvay Earpaduthikolikindran Edan Molemaha Otthisayuvay Earpaduthikolikindran Enradharan Oru Nyayamaha Iruttal Oru Samamaha Iruttal Equality Appram Mutualitri Matra Oruvaargkey Nalathay Parasparam Karthiel Kuldhal Indha Appram Undu Oru Harmonious Equilibrium Oru Otthisayuvay Eppurudhume Undu Samasseer Nileyalulla Oru Otthisayuvu Isu Idhan Molemaha Thaan Indha Irindu Edhre Edhiraana Amaypugalakkeeday Aandha Manidhan Oru Otthisayuvay Konduvarikindran Isu Daam Vande Indha Muyachakal Illame Vande Eerkkadu Enda Oru Amaypil Enda Vaargi Manidhan Seyalbadigindran Enradharan Yertay Vande Indha Otthisayuvay Nokki Thaan Seyalbadigindradhu Adan Vaargal Thaan Manidhanum Seyalbadigindran Enradharan Vaaruvu Eppurudhu Indha Prabanjathila Thoondriyado Appurudhurunde Indha Edhre Edhiraana Nilegal Irkindradhu Yertay Enna Sayikindradhu Enradharan Yertay Eppurudhume Oru Otthisayuvithaan Nadi Seyalbadukondrikindradhu Isu Bhagavan Vande Mudal Chapter La Solidupparu All problems are life are problems of harmony Abdibar Adhe Pala Nature Vande Enna Sayikindradhu Enradharan Ella unresolved discourse Adavudhe Tiirtu Vekkappadaadhu Moranbadhigal Elathimi The nature Enna Sayikindradhu Enradharan Tiirtu Vekkindradhu Enkintran Bhagavan Innakilena Koda Naalik Tiirtu Vekkum Abdingra Adhanala Enna Solikindran Bhagavan Nam Madal Enna Solikindradha Ipo Vande The Sadapurulakkum Anmaavirkkum Idaila Vande Edhre Edhiraana Nilegal Irkku Ana Yertayroda Parinamorachi La Indha Matterkum Spiritkum Idailulnaa Nam Moranbadum Tirkappadum Adarkaha Thaan Bhagavan Anga Solikindran Eppurudhume Nature Vande Eppurdum Harmony Create Panidhitthu Daarikudhu Ellaavidam Aavun Moranbaduguna Thakkalayamana Daan Andha Moranbadhigal Vande Resolve Vaayedoo Adinoke Thaan Yertay Seyalbadukondi Irkinradhu Enra Karthi Solikindran Adhe Karthi Thaan Indhu Bhagavan Solikindran Indha Soling Madam?
Yertayl Oru Pahudhi Daanasar Manidhan Ye Bhagavan Indha Manidhanamathra Thaniya Perichikkaatikindran Yertayoda Seyandha Vanda Yertayla Vande Parinamorachi La Ipo Munnoodiya Irkkarama Ye Bhagavan Indha Edathla Thaniya Vanda Aavun Perichikkaanbikindran Matteravida Life Vande Life Life La Vanda Vanda Manidhan Abdi Irkkumborudhu Ye Oru Thani Thuvum?
Manidhan Kitthu Da Manam Enginradha Amaypirkkindradhu Beryaar Kitthime Illay? Liya? Manidhan Kitthu Da Manam Enginradha Amaypirkku Andha Manadin Molemaha Dan Manidhan Irayvanay Nadaikindran Manam Enginradha Amaypin Molemaha Dan Indha Enteyla Prabanjavu The Irayvanay Nada- Irayvanay Vande Nada Muyachikindradhu Ena Individual Vande It is a concentration of the divine consciousness Universe vande, it is a spread, universe vande, divine consciousness vande, spreadaayadu, ellarathali spreadaayadu. Oru individual, individualla than, there is a concentration of divine consciousness. Adhanala than, the individual moolamaha than, avanodiyae, avanodiyae aspiration moolamaha than, the, in the parinamavallachiila, divine realization nadandhaakunna. Adu manidhan, pa erkaram, manidhan, manidhanodiyae manam, manamengindramayppu, adan moolamaha than, manidhan, in the, avanodiyae lakshmiathriyadha adainthaakunna.
But, yerkayanadu, manidhan moolam sayalbattukondirikindradu, abdiye sol.
Am, 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 kantipa, thathunmay. The man and the, 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 the man in the universe, in the chapter four or five la paththonliya? Adhal, thish daan Bhavan solirkindrar, manidhan, thanimandhan, universe. Uh, itayum kadanda, and the transcendent, ellamy vande, veeverana nileme, nilehale kadayadu. The transcendent, ellay kadanda, unru, thanay, universe moolamaha velipadutti kolikindradu, parabandjam moolamaha. Parabandjam vande, oru thanimandhan moolamaha, and the seyasaktiay kovithukondu, pirippi vande, and the irayasaktiay adaya, virumbikindradu. Hmm, hmm. Adhanala, thanimandhan vande, um, ellaththunodiyae angamaha irundhaanu, thanimandhan vande, avan moolamaha than, the realization, eduthiyaga nadibarikindradu. Hmm. He is also a part of nature, but, in the parinamavallachiila, avanodiyae role vande, romba kemanaadu.
Hmm, okay, thank you sir.
Ena, avan kitta da, manamengindramayppu erkindradu.
Hmm. Nandi.
Sir, Rangarajan sir, oru karthi solalama sir.
Solang sir please.
Sir, madam keetakelviki, uh, MP pandit, way of creation, abdinsulutu, arputamavilakittu, kadesisla, Aravindaroda, quotationeyakudukarar sir. Um, the madri, yeah, hidden bliss is at the root of things, yeah, mute delight regards times countless words. To house God's joy in things, space gave wide room, to house God's joy in self, our souls were born, abdinsulutu. Arav, saavithri lindu quotation kutthutu, ninga, ipasunna karthikalalasolramadri, the soul garu, highesta, evolveda, erkada, at present in the manla than erkku. Not in the animals or in plants and other things, even though, abdinsulutu. Ningakoda, panchinathukumunadi, rudimentary stages, madha, and the psychic, uh, the la, namala, man, clearkara la, abdi ningesunninga. Madam keetakeluyu, ningakuttha explanationo, the way of creation, julipu, commentary san, ivila, kuduthinda, kadisi, and the saavithri vayyavande, uh, our pandit, kuruppedikindrar sir. Romba arputamaha kirkusar.
Thank you sir, thank you very much, thank you. In the, in the, thanimandhanodiyae sudandiram, adheponr, oru otthumatha amayppu, adanodiyae nalam, thanimandhanodiyae nalam. Uh, this, in the, in the, in the irandukum idailana, this allam vande, eder ederana nilehala erkundalam kodan. This, irandukum idaila, edu vande, oru, oru utthi sayva eyerpadutikindradu enral, the manamengindra, amayppu. Manamengindramayppu than, the irandu nilehale me, otte, utthi sayvaaha, oru irandukum midigal vande, in the irandu eder nilehale, irandu nilehaleyum, oru, oru, onraga andu, onraga erkakkoodiyadu, oru teeruvayadu than, vaagikindradu. Manam, Bhavaninga, oru karthi kurukindran, enna karthi enral, uh, mind alone can find the road towards the harmony intended. That is, manam, moonrada vande, the utthi sayva vande, manam, manam, moonrada vaagamudiyam, adhakana, pathayai vande, adu than, kandipadikamudiyam. Utthi sayva, utthi sayva eyerpadakkoodiyadu pathayai, edu kandipadikamudim enral, manamengindramayppu than, kandipadikamudiyam. Irundalam kodan, enda arathla vande, enga vande, and the utthi sayva, enbada, poranamaha erkum, enral, manadek kadanda, oru sakthi erkindradu, angada vande, harmony erkum. Even though the harmony itself can only be found in a power still beyond us. And the power, gharu, the supplemental power, supermindla than, yeah, namal, supermindli, yeah, utthi sayva, namal, teriyam. Enna karano, supermind abdiinkarudhu, oru pakkam, unity consciousness odar, sachidharandavakkam, oru pakkam, unity consciousness odar. Innoru pakkam, enna banadu, creation, adu, adu, oruvaakikindradu, division, multiplicity odar, oru pakkam erkindradu. This, irandey, onnakikindradu, so, supermindla vande, divisionay kadayadu, anga unity da. Adhanala than Bhavan solikindrar, angada, unity erkamburudhu da, harmony erkum, division, then, harmony erkadu. Supermindla than, ungalakvande, harmony erkum, ellamy vande, the unitary consciousness arekum, multiplicity irundhal kodan, and the arathla unity erkum. Thathna, nige Bhavan, kurippe dikindrar, manamengindra, anam, manamengindramayppin, variyaga than solunna. Bhavan romba jaakrdaya vaathayala, you, you, kintrar, parang, na, parang, resolution is attempted by the higher principle of mind, which alone can find the road towards the harmony intended, even though the harmony itself can only be found in a power still beyond us. Namai thaandi, and the sakthi, supplemental power, adhaladha vande, unmeelya, utthi sayva erkindradu. Adark, adark, adarkana, pathayai noke than, manam selikindradu, enkinnra, karthi, inga, Bhavan, kurippe dikindrar. This allam kemana, oru karthu, in the, namin, the, especially, uh, in the, ombothu, patthi, patthi, paragraf, la Bhavan kurippe dikindradu, paththam abdi na. Vaarvu vande, parinamavallachiila, uh, munnera, munnera, edu, manidhan vande, edi noke pohintrana, and the, and the, yerkayin, vidhi. Edai noke sayalbadikindradu enral, oru utthi sayva, oru paraspara ottrumay, anbu, thanay, uh, thanay, meeri pirarukku, thanay vaagundhal, thismari, oru, lawarcha, thisaladha, sayalbadikindradu. This, vande, yerkayin vidhi, enra Bhavan, kurippe dikindrar. Thisla, namav, namakvande, eduthakollavandiyay karthikal, undu, naam vande, oru thanimandhan. Naam vande, the vidhi kuutpatte, naam vaadki amithukollumburudhu da, namurudiyavadki, nala, serumiyaha amayyum. Ena, life divine vande, nambo, over, life divine, eh, apdai approach pandradu, gharu, paththam abdi na, Bhavan solakkoodi, ellamy vande, pinnadi erkak, ellamy, oru, core principles of life, adhodai, solradu, formula, bari, solrar. And the formula lindu, namba da, vande, practical life, vandu, and the application, namba da, eduthukunna, adu, eduthikittu, namba, life la, follow pandanu, abdi na. Our life vande, romba serumiyaha amayyum, mother enna pandranga, abdi na, directa, ida vande, avan vande, practical, avan solranga. Anam, Bhavan solakkoodi, thisalna, enda principle, le, vaarvu sayalbadu, sayalbadikindradu. And the principlesode, base pani da, namurudiyavadu vande, amayinum, abdingrar, anan, ovvar, thanimandhanu vande, in the, yerkayin sayalvaadu, in the vidhi, adhodai, align pani, nambo, oru, vaadki amachittha, abdi na, avangadevadki sumagumaha amayyum. And the alignment illadamburudhu da, the problem varikindradu, ena, nambo, nambo, vande, we are not aligned with the divine scheme. Nambo, vande, egoisticar karkarudhu, and the, oru, 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 collectivity odar, oru otthu pahamar karkarudhu. This allam vande, yeah, nambo, vande, oru ethical principles, thisallam thaandi, uh, Bhavan enna solikindrar enral. Uh, in the gunathavirkarama, than, innak, vande, fittest for the survival, abdingrar. Darwin Thieray, enna sunnanga, survival of the fittest, nu, sunnanga. Yaarallam, balampurundiyamgalo, yaarallam, vande, thanodiyae suurnalay, adakki, aal, aal, aalamudikindradu, avanga da, uh, survival, survival of the fittest, abdinsunnaanga. Bhavan vande, adavande, maatri, romba arakha solikindrar, fittest for the survival, abdingrar. Yaarallam, innakirkakuruyu suurnaila, olagathala, vaadathagadiyana, avergal, abdi na, yaarallam, paraspara mattravolodu, oru utthi sayvaodu, vaadikindraragalo. Anbu selathikindraragalo, the association, oru collectivity odar, oru, uh, association, ottrumayaga sayalbadikindraragalo. Ivanga da, vande, innakirkaran nilela, vaadathagadiyana, avergal, abdingro, romba, romba, arputamana karthi, Bhavaninga, namakva vaagankindrar. Paragraph eleven, polamanumbe. Sundar sir.
Ah, yes sir, paragraph eleven. For, if the data with which we have started.
Pinnadi sound oru, ido sound oru, vitha velasirangala, avan, la.
Uh, yes sir, anga pakkathu flats la pandranga.
Ah, sir, sir, paravala.
Maybe someone else can read, sir.
Um, uh, madam, ning padikilingla, madam?
Padikina sir, padikina. For, if the data with which we have started are correct, the end of the road, the goal itself can only be reached by mind passing beyond itself into that which is beyond mind. Since of that, the mind is only an inferior term and an instrument first for descent into form and individuality and secondly for re-ascension into that reality which the form embodies and the individuality represents. Therefore, the perfect solution of the problem of life is not likely to be realized by association, interchange and accommodations of love alone or through the love of the mind and the heart alone. It must come by a fourth status of life in which the eternal unity of the many is realized through the spirit and the conscious foundation of all the operations of life is laid no longer in the divisions of body nor in the passions and hungers of the vitality nor in the groupings and the imperfect harmonies of the mind nor in a combination of all these but in the unity and freedom of the spirit.
Thank you madam, thank you, thank you very much. Explanation ulapodanumbe.
Padikting sir.
Shapading madam please.
The human mind is the parent of limitation and ignorance and the dualities. It is only a dark figure of the supermind. Therefore, the goal of life, that is divine life, can only be reached by mind passing beyond itself. It has to reach that which is beyond mind. Mind is only inferior term of that, that is supermind. Mind is the instrument first for descent into form and individuality. Secondly, it is an instrument for re-ascension, that is climbing back into that reality which is present in the form and represented by the individuality. The perfect solution to the problem of life cannot be reached by association, interchange and accommodations of love alone or by mind alone or by heart alone. This must come by a fourth status of life. In that status, the eternal unity of many is realized through the spirit. The conscious foundation of all the operations of life is not based on the divisions of body, not in the passions and hungers of vitality, not in the grouping and the perfect harmonies of mind, not in the combination of all these. It is founded on the unity and freedom of the spirit. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. Ipoh, Bhavan vande, in the last paragraph la. This varikam paththa paragraph la, Bhavan vande, oru padipadiyaha vaarvin, nilehale kuruppetundharu. Mind abdingra nilela vande, uh, in the, aduttha, manidhanodiyaduttha, kattam, selvadar kana, adipada, amayppakal, allam, oruvaakikindradu, anbu eyerpadikindradu. Uh, thanimandhanukum, oru otthumatha kuru, adarkum, vande, oru utthi sayva eyerpadikindradu. Manidhan vande, than maathram, in the olagathala, vaagamudiyadu, thanek kadanda, edo undu erkindradu, adu adayavendum, abdingra, sindhanayil erkindran. This allam vande, Bhavan kurippe dikindrar. Irundalam kodan, the fourth, in the kadasi paragraph la, enna solikindrar enral, the moonraavudinale, taandi, aduttha, nile erkindradu, than, fourth status of life. The fourth status of life, abdingradu, than, vande, supplemental life. The supplemental life la, Bhavan enna solikindrar enral, naam paththa, and the association, mutual help, love, thisallam, correct, abdingrar, thisallam, 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 velipadugal. Anal, thisallam maathramay vande, in the, um, uh, oru, vaarvu, vaar, vaarvu erkana, oru poranamana, oru, solution. Vaarvin prachanigal kana, oru perfect solution vande, thisallam maathram kettachirada, abdingta, thisallam, thisallam maathram, vande, manidhanakke, kettividaadu, abdingrar. Thathna, nam, thisallam, thisallam, tave, thisallam, man, Bhavan vande, marakavillu. Anal, thisayum kadanda, oru nile erkindradu, appurudhu da, vande, thisallam vande, oru, nerandaramaha, oru amaypaha, maro, manidhanodiyae olakal, vaarvin, nerandaramaha, amaypaha, maro, abdingrar. Thiskallam karano, enna abdi na, namurudiyae mind, mind vande, epurudumay, enna daan, mind, mind vande, oru periyah, intellectual mind, oru, irundhalam, sari. Uh, oru periyah, uh, jyani nodi manamaha irundhalam, sari. Adi, manamengindramayppu, and the amayppunid sayalvaadu, epurudumay vande, oru variyari kutpatte, than, this sayalbadikindradu. Adheponr, oru ariyamayal than sayalbadikindradu, irmaiyal than sayalbadikindradu. This, vande, manidhanodiyae, manidhai sartha, nilehale, variyari kutpatte sayalbadudal, ariyamayil sayalbadudal, irmaiil sayalbadudal. This allam, human mindodiyae, nature, enna karano, thathna, namapaththurukum, enna karano, enral, the human mind vande, adanodiyae, moolamana, supermind, adimanam. Adhilirundhi, this, pirindi sayalbadikindradu, adhanala, ipadipattavu, oru koraivadugal, kada, aalakindradu. Uh, Bhavan enna kurippe dikindrar enral, it is only a dark figure of the supermind, abdingrar, manada vande, oru adimanadhanodiyae, oru, iruladaintha, oru, oru, thotram, abdingrar. Adhanala, vande, uh, namurudiyae, ilakki, enna enral, inga, vaarvu vande, inga, vande, deviha vaarvaaha, maavendu. Adi, epurudhu, shathim, enral, manam, thanek kadanda, selavendu. Manam vande, thanek kadanda, unru, adi vande, the manam, manam, adayavendu. Ena, manam, ipperkaran nile vande, and the nile illa, adhalirundhi, pirindu vande, nile. Manatek kadanda, nile, edu, enral, thish daan, supermind. Adhepola, manamengindradu, in the parabandjastala, vande, creation, vare, createpadumburudhu, namayerkanave paththurukum, involusion eyerpadikindradu, involusion, enral, irakkam. The deva, divine consciousness, iray, unarv nile, thanay, in the puviila, vande, irakkam sayidu, kolikindradu, descent, involusion nadakindradu. And the descent, vande, vadivangalukul, adu, vadivangalukul, thanay marithukolikindradu. Elletru, unru, ellay kutpatte vadivathurukul, thanay, irangi, marithukolikindradu. In the irakkatla, vande, uh, edu, vande, uh, mudal, karuvyaaha, erkindradu, enral, and the, adan, adan, moolamaha than, and the irakkam eyerpadikindradu, enral, manamengindramayppu. Adhanala than, sachidhananda, and the, and the, and the, thalathra, and the thalangilla, Bhavan kurippe dikindradu, meela vande, moonru, nilehale, sat, chit, ananda. Idaila vande, adimanam, supermind, adarka keda, mind, life and body, abdin, the yedu, amayppakal, kurippe dikindrar. So, the meela lindu, keda, vurmo, the first, edu, vurdu, abdi na, mind, mind, abdingra, oru, amayppu than, vurukindradu, adan, moolamaha than, vande, the, division eyerpadikindradu, adu varikam, unity. Supermind, varikam, unity da. Mind, abdingra, nilela vande, than, the, perivu, division, enbada, aaramikindradu. Adh, 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 kurikimahil, than, nige Bhavan, kurippe dikindrar, mind is the instrument first for descent into form and individuality. Adhepola, epurudhu, adan, moolamaha, adu, oru, irangam, irangavadar, oru, sadanamaha, payanbadikindradu. Adhepola, adu, yeruvadarakum, sadanamaha, payanbadikindradu, it is an instrument for re-ascension, climbing back into that reality, abdingrar. Ipoh, in the...
Between the form and its environment. With the emergence of life from matter and the emergence of conscious mind from life, a new set of balance of forces is introduced in the realm of matter. Till life becomes one with its source, the conscious force, death, desire and incapacity form the intermediary status of evolution of life. Darwinian theory believes that is intermediary status only. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. Number life, about life, in the first chapter, life. Allah, what does God say to us? Life, how it is? It's the origin of it, let us see, it is consciousness force. That is life, life force's origin, origin of it. That is the main part of life. Life, when it comes, it is three different kinds of things. At its original, it was a conscious state. But in the consciousness force, when it is illuminated, life, when it is going on, three different, one, dried up things, it has to be replaced. Why is that? Memory, hunger, hunger, what is it? One's own will, that is all. The same way, incapacity, incapacity, how it is? A yellow seed, it can't grow, for a tree. It can't grow without it. Humans always have this incapacity. Yes, all the people who live, their incapacity is known for a period. For some time, we have been in a hotel, we are not able to sleep. The mind is not able to grow in a yellow seed. So, this incapacity is the result of the growth of the tree. So, this memory, one's own will, hunger, incapacity, all of them are the same tree. This is, its mind, the consciousness force. What kind of things do you see in the tree? If you see it in your mind, these good things, if you see it in your mind, death, the name of the death, immortality, death. Here, hunger, desire, see it, there, happiness, satisfied delight. The same way, if we have anything, we know it, there, it is seen by everyone. The consciousness force, Satchidananda, his own self, consciousness force. What kind of things do we see in this memory, one's own will, one's own will? The tree, its mind, the consciousness force, consciousness force. This is the first, second, third, three things, the tree, the Parinama World. The question is, why God says? If you see it in the first thing, it is only a division, it is only a difference. Here, a subconscious thing is there. A, the power, if it is going on, it is a subconscious will. We don't know, but it is a will. It is a power, it is a power. The pain, for a different power, its end, its end. It is in the end, it is in the end. This is the beginning of a world, a world, a world, a world. Then, the tree, it is illuminated, in a world, the tree, it is illuminated. Then, in a world, a mind, a mind, a mind, a mind. If you see a mind, the world, the power, the power, the power, the power. Yes, a mind, a mind, a mind, a mind, it changes everything. It takes everything from its end. If you see a mind, a mind, a mind, a mind, it is mechanical. Once, if you see a mind, a mind, a mind, a mind, it is, it is, it is, it is, it is, it is, it is. That is what God says. A new set of balance of forces is introduced in the realm of matter.
தனிப்பட்ட அமைப்பு என்பது அந்த தனிப்பட்ட அமைப்புக்குள் அது செல்கின்றது அதனோட நான் பரிமாற்றத்தை அது ஏற்படுத்திக்கின்றது. அதனால இங்கு வந்து தனிப்பட்ட அமைப்பு என்பது அந்த தனிப்பட்ட அமைப்புக்குள் நின்றுவிடுவது இல்ல. சடவழக்குள்ளதான் தனிப்பட்ட அமைப்பா இருக்கின்றது. ஆனால் மனுநதன் இந்த இரண்டாவது லைப் லைப்பின் ஒரு செக்கன் பிரிச்சிப்பில எல்லாமே வந்து தனி தனிப்பட்ட அமைப்பு என்பது ஒரு ஒற்றுமத்த அமைப்போடு இணைந்து பரிமாற்றம் நடைபடும் ஆரம்பிக்கின்றது. இங்கு வந்து என்ன முக்கியமா நடைபடுத்திக்கின்றது என்றால் ஒன்றோடு ஒன்று பரிமாற்றம் செய்துகொள்ளுதல் இண்டர் சேஞ்ச் ஒன்றோடு ஒன்று கலந்துகொள்ளுதல் இண்டர் மிக்ஸ்ச்சர் ஒன்றோடு ஒன்று இடையில் பியுசன் இதெல்லாம் வந்து வாழ்வின் ஒரு முக்கியமான அம்சங்களாக காணப்படுகின்றது. அடுத்த பாய்ன்ட் போலாம்.
இன்று மித்ஸ்ட் ஆப் திஸ் கன்டினியஸ் சேஞ்ச் ஆண்ட் இன்று இன்பினிட் யுனிட்டி நேசர் என்ஷூஸ் செபரிட்னஸ் ஆன் இன்டிவிஜுவலிட்டி ஆப் பார்ம். வான் தனிப்பட்ட அமைப்பு என்பது அடுத்த பாய்ன்ட் போலாம். இன்று மித்ஸ்ட் ஆப் திஸ் கன்டினியஸ் சேஞ்ச் ஆண்ட் இன்று இன்பினிட் யுனிட்டி நேசர் என்ஷூஸ் செபரிட்னஸ் ஆன் இன்டிவிஜுவலிட்டி ஆப் பார்ம். வான் தனிப்பட்ட அமைப்பு என்பது
The individual survival and mutual self-giving. The aggregate profits the individual and the individual profits the collectivity. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam, thank you. The Manamangintra Amayapurunudaya, Nalla Valachyadhananilai Kanaappadumborudhu Da. Ah, Onrodu Ondu Saarundu Seyalvadum Amayapugel Urvaakaintrana. Tanay Oru Manidhanen Enkiraavundu Tanipattamayapaha Matthana Seyalbadama. Oru Association of Individualsa Seyalbadigintra. Liya Adu Unde Remba Pakkaram, Kankooda Pakkaram. Ellaadathile Oru Associationruthu, Ah, Amayapugelruthu, Onre Ondu Saarunda Amayapugel. Okay, Adhal Nareyakurakalirukala, Irundalamkoda. Manidhan Unde Thaanaga Seyalbadamaillami Associationruthu, Illami Associationruthu, Illami Governmenta Arukattom. Oru Officea Arukattom, Veeda Arukattom. Illami Unde, Verum Tanimanudan, Tanimanudanodiyah, Avanodiyah Pokirtuk Matthana Seyalbaduvadhal. Oru Otthumathakkujuvaahatthan Anithame Seyalbadigintran. Idellam Unde, Edhanal Eerpatthadi Endral, Manamangintra Amayapu Unde. Vaavvil Pradanumaga Seyalbaduvadal, Ittakaya Seyalvada Amayindulladhu, Enkintra Karthi Bhavan Kuripadigintrar. Adu Matthonla, The Anbu, Love, Will Be The Dominant Factor Ab dingra. Adu Daan Unde Oru Pradanumana Oru Satyaga Seyalvadum. Adunudaya Oru Mihaipattaveli Padu. The Mihaipattaveli Padu Daan Unde, Ah, Oru Vadi Narathum Oru Vidhi. The Mondravathanilai Irkundradliya, Vaavvin Mondravathanilai La, Edhu Unde Oru Governing Principle. Oru Vadi Narathum Kootpadaga Seyalvadum, Abdiina, The Anbu, Adu Daan. Adunudaya, Ah, Oru Mihaipattavittaveli Padu Daan Unde. Oru Vadi Narathum Kootpadaga, Oru Governing Principleaga, The Mondravathanilai Seyalvadum, Abdingra. Adhe Pola, Manidhanen, This Samayatal, Manidhanen Enna Unarigintara Endral. Oru Parimatrath, Oru Parimatrathte Unarigintra. Enakkuttherinjada Unde Ennoda Vaachikununna, Na, Virumbadhal, Mattrakalodu Parindupakirundukulavirumbikintre. Enkittarakavishetha Mattrakal, My, First, Vishen Matthanale, Nalla Enkittarakav Porulhaliinann Mattrakalun, Parindupakirundukulavirumbikintre. Ah, Adhe Poonr, Mattrakalodu Inayindusayalbada Virumbikintre. Idellami Unde, Manamangintra Amayapunudaya, Ah, Oru Seyalvadin Karanamaga Niyaadigintradu. Vaadkeela, First Stage La Unde Matter Da. Second Stage La Unde Life Da Pradanuma Arikindradu. Verum Life Activity, Survival, Anga Unde Verum, Ande, Ande Stage La Rukus, Struggle For Survival. The Mondravathanilai La Da Unde The Manamangintra Vidivarigintradu, Apporudha Unde Illami Unde, The Uyeru, Uyerandavishengalna Varudhu. Ayithan Bhavaninga Kuripadigintra. Adutthu Unde, The Mondravathanilai La, The Third Stage La Unde, Ah, Mukyamana Oru Karthi Bhavan Kuripadigintra. Naamirakkudainilai Unde The Third Stage. Ah, Yeppo Unde Oru Manidhan Unde Vaavvudarka Tagadiyana Va, Tagadiyana Vanaginra, Abdingra. Fittest For Survival, Yaar Unde, Remba Fittest Survivalkka, Abdiin Paathamna. Oru Tanimanudanaha Arukattom, Oru Group, Oru Otthumathamayapaha Arukattom. Yaar Unde, Indha, Ottrumiyadhan Seyalbadakkoodiya, Orunginandhiseyalbadakkoodiya, Andu Vidhiyai, Ah, Pinbattrigirarul. The Law Of Association And The Law Of Love, Anbu. Idhey Pinbattrigirarul, Avakal Da Unde, Vaav, Vaavvudarka Mihaavum Tagadiyana Avakal, Enra Karthi Bhavan Nigga Kuripadigintra. The Common Help, Kindliness Sanbaha Iruthal, Affection, Comradeship, Natpurumay Parattutal, Ottrumiyaha Iruthal. Idellami Unde Oru Dominant Characteristicaga, Oru Marum, Abdingra. Oru Manidhanunkum, Indorum Manidhanunkum, Medaila Unde Oru Otthisayavu Eerpadigintradu. Oru Manidhan, Mattram Manidharukal, Mattramanidharukkut Varanagikintra. Parasparam Andha, Ah, Thar, Andha, Perudal, Varanagudal, Parasparam Narayubirigintradu. Adhe Poonr, Oru, Oru Manidhan Oru Otthumathakkujuvais Tharundu Vaagikintra. Avanala Andhakkuju, Fine, Fine Padigintradu. Adhe Poonr, Andhathanimanudan, Andhakkujuvinal, Andhakollectivity, Adhanal Fine Parigintra. Idellam Unde, Manidhanudaya, Oru, Nihaipattavittavu Seyalvada Ha, Vaavvin Mondravathanilai Seyalvadumborudhu. Idellam Kanaappadigintradu, Enra Bhavan Kuripadigintra. Aduttha, Poramma Aduttha.
Padikeva, sir?
Padike, madam.
In The Third Stage, Mind Progressively Impulses Its Own Law More And More On The Material Existence. Mind Is Setler Than The Grass Body. Unlike The Body, It Does Not Need To Feed Upon Something, To Assimilate It And To Possess And Grow. The Mind, More, More It Gives, Fuses Itself With Others, The More It Fuses, Receives Others Into Itself And Increases The Scope Of Its Existence. In The Third Status, We Find The Principle Of Association And The Growth Of Love. Love Is The Desire To Give Oneself And Receive Others In Exchange. At First, Love Enjoys Receiving And Demanding From Others As It Is Under The Influence Of Physical And Vital. Thank You Sir.
Aduttha, Aduttha Pointi Padichiruna, Oh, Related, Related Point.
The True Law Of Love Is To Establish An Equal Commerce Where The Joy Of Giving Equals The Joy Of Receiving. In The End, The Joy Of Giving Tends To Become Greater. It's Not, It's Not Self Seems To Be Greater And Dearer Than Its Own Individuality When Love Exceeds Itself Under The Pressure Of The Psychic Flame To Atain The Fulfillment Of Unity With Others. Thank You Sir.
Thank, Thank You Madam, Thank You. The Mondravathanilai La, Manam Unde Enna Seigindradu Endral, First, First Stage La Matter Da, Matter Mechanical Force. Irundavathanilai La, Verum Life Impulse, Uyervaranu, Alladha, Irundavathanilai La. Mondravathanilai La, Manam Unde, Oru Dominant Factor Arukus. Adu Unde Tanudiyah Vidhiyay, Adu Thirmaanikintradu. Tanudiyah Vidhiyay, Mattr, Taney Saarunda Sadha, Ah, Porulhaliil Midu, Adhanudam Manidhan, Manidhan, Manidhu Unde, Adhanudiyah Vidhiyay, Adu, Ah, Ah, Aalimay Seigindradu. Ah, Manamangintra Amayapu Paatham Abdiina, Adu Unde Oru, Ah, Sushvamana Oru Amayapu. Anal Odal Unde, Oru Stoolamayapu, Gross Body. Bodyki Da Unde, Oru Unavay Upkundu, Adu Tan Uyervaranveendum, Adan Murmakathanay Perukikollaveendum. Tanay Varathikollaveendum, Idellam Unde Odalai Saarundha Seyalvadugel. Anam Manam Apdikadayadhu, Manam Unde, Endhalavukkundu Tan Mattram Manangalodu Tanay Inayitthukolligintradu. Andhalavukka Adu, Mattram Manangalil, Elidirun, Irundu, Pettrukolligintradu. Pettrukondu Tan Varakintradu. Adu Daan Manidhanudaya Seyalvada, Manidharukum, Andha, Ma, Odalukum Enna Vitthiasa Abdiina. Manam Unde, The More It Gives, The More It Receives. Indhi Unde Oru Kattupadukadayadhu, Veres Odalukka Admaari Mudiyadhu. In The Mondravathanilai La, Vaavvinodiy Mondravathanilai La, Ah, Edhu Unde Oru, Mihaipattav Seyalvada, Abdingra, Adu Remba Paatham. In The Orunginandhiseyalvadudal, Apparam Anbin Belipadu. Adu Daan, Anbin Unde, Anbin Enbadu, Ah, Onre, On, Pirerukke, Onrein Naam Varanagudzu, Adhe Poonr, Pirereridminundu Naam Parasparam, Pa, Pettrukollvadu. Idellam Parasparam Narakkoodiya Oru Seyalvada. Um, Anbin Udaya Seyalvadala, Mudallanilai La, Eppri Irkkintradu Endral. Adu Pettrukollvadil Daan, Idu Unde Illam Manidharakalittin Kanaappadigintradu, Adhaadu, Indha, Mah, Bhavan Sorlekkudiyah Nilai, Idellami Unde. Ella, Manidharakal, Ella Vidamana Manidharakalittiyon, Ella Tharangalilam Kanaappadigintradu. Nalla Valachyadhanam Manidharakal Unde, Idunuday Uyer, Idunuday Unde Uyer, Higher Aspects Remba Pakkalam. Manidharakalittayilittay, Konjyo, Anga Unde, Avangaludiyavallachi, Konjyo, Kamiaarukkaraadathal Unde Paathamna, Adu, Konjyindan, Idharudaya Amshangalna, Konjyo Kamiaanremba Pakkalam. Ena, Anbu Unde, Ah, Yellaar Unde Adeseriha Kayalvadu Kadayadhu. Celibearkundu, Avangal Pettrukollvadu Daan Padikumoriyah, Avangalka Thiripyavundu Avangala, Celuttha, They Cannot Give, Reciprocate. Idha Aarampanilai Abdingra, First Stage La, Ah, Love Enjoys Receiving And Demanding From Others. Enna Karanoh, Abdiina, Adu Unde Oru Physical And Vital Arukus. Physical And Vital Influence La Irkakrapa Naturally, Aduk Unde, Pettrukollvadil Daan Inbam Adigima Irkkintradu. Anan Anbin Udaya Mukyamana, Adhanudaya True Law Of Love, Love Abdingra, Unmayana Vidhiyab, Edhu Abdiina. Samamaha, Pettruk, Samamaha Varanagudzu, Samavaha Pettrukollvadil. Equal Joy Of Equal, Joy Of Giving Equals The Joy Of Receiving. Adhaadu Pettrukollvadilialo Inbam Irkkintradu, Andhalavukku, Nam, Naam, Nam, Namidhamunundu Pirer, Varanagvadilum, Samamana Inbeti Nam, Kandbadu. Idu Unde, Idu Daan Anbin Udaya, Oru Unmayana Vidhiyandra Bhavan Kuripadigintra. Iridhila Unde, Manidhan Unde Nalla Valachyadhananilai La, Eppri Kanaappadigintradu Endral. The Joy Of Giving Tends To Become Greater. Varanagvadil Daan Adhim, Inbam Kadikintradu. Karnanuk, Ah, Karnanudaya Personality, You Know Paathirukkum, Characterukka Daan Paathirukkum, Karnanukkundu Varanagvadil Daan Inbam. Adhe Poonr, Oru Manidhan Unde Nalla Valachyadhananilai La, Avankke Edhal Inbam Kadikintradu Endral, The Joy Of Giving Tends To Become Greater. Adhe Poonr, Tanay, Tanidhamunundu Marubattamayapay Unde, Tanay Saarunda, Tanay, Tanay Saarada Onre Unde, Taninum Uyerandamayapaha Avan Karthigintra. Idellam Unde Manidhanudaya, Uyernilain, Uyernilain Velipadugel, Idellam Manidhanukke Eppodu Satyamaginradu Endral. Avan Unde, Avanudaya, Avanudaya Otthumathetjevanum, Avanudaya Saythiyamayathin Aalimayil Seyalbadumborudhu Da, Ittakaya, Ittakaya, Ah, Panbugel Avanidam Kanaappadigintran. Oru Saadhana Nilai Irkkumby, Idellam Kanaambidiyadhu. Eppodu Manidhan Unde, Tanudaya Saythiyachjevinin Aalimayil Seyalbadigintranou, Apporudhu Unde Avan Unde, Andhuseyalthadhan Avan Veerigintra. Anbu Varanagvadil Daan Avan Aanandamadigintradan, Aanagintra, Adagintra. Idellam Unde, Saythiyapurushan Unde Mihaipattu, Avanudaya Saythiyapurushanin Seyalvada Mihaipadumborudhu, Oru Manidhanidathil Kanaappadum Nilaihalaga Irkintran. Aduttha, Porra?
Padike, ma sir?
Padike, madam.
In The Course Of Development Into The Third Status, The Struggle Of Life Is Transformed Into Fulfillment And Harmony. There Is An Increasing Impulse Of Aggregate Life To Absorb The Individual. The Individual Possesses The Life Of Others As His Want. This Fulfills The Opposite Impulse Of Individual Possession Found In The Second Stage Of Life. Man Tries To Possess Himself By Self-Affirmation And Freedom. By Association And Love, Paternity, Homage, Shek, He Gives Himself To Others. He Creates A Balance Between These Two Opposites Through His Ideas Of Harmonious Euphemium, Justice, Mutuality And Equality. The Resolution Of These Opposites Is Attempted By The Higher Principle Of Mind. Yet, The Harmony Can Only Be Found In A Power That Is Supramental Still Beyond Us.
Aduttha, Aduttha Pointi Padichirun, Madam.
The Goal Of Life, That Is Divine Life, Can Only Be Reached By Mind Causing Beyond Itself. The Perfect Solution To The Problem Of Life Cannot Be Reached By Association, Interchange And Accommodation Of Love Alone Or By Mind Alone Or By Heart Alone. This Must Come By A Full Status That Is Supramental Of Life. In That Status, The Eternal Unity Of Many Is Realized And Founded On The Unity And Freedom Of The Spirit. Thank You Sir.
Thank You Madam, Thank You. The Third Stage La Unde, Fa, Fa, Second Stage La Paatham, Vaavvil Unde, Vaavvud Tanay Nilayneerithikollav Poradavendirikintradu. Ah, In The Mondravathan Stage La Unde, Eppri Na, Enna, Evvare Adu Vaavvu, Urumatrampadigintradu, Endral. Oru, Ah, Poratom, Abdingra, Oru Otthisayavaha Mari, Mariyavadigintradu. Irundavathanilai Irkkudiyah, Oru Desire And Hunger, Adhaan Paathamna, Onre Adayaveendum Enkintra, Oru, Oru Mihaipattav Oru Unarv. Anga Unde, In The Mondravathanilai La, Fulfillment Ayadhu, Urumatrampadigintradu. Adhe Poonr, Ah, In The Otthumathavavva Enbadu, Aggregate Life, Adu Unde Tanimanudanudaya, Tanimanudanay, Tanudora Angamaha Vaiththukolligintradu. Tanimanudanay Vilakkavadhal, Adhe Poonr, Tanimanudanyav, Avanudaya Sireppakulvadun, Tanudiyav Oru Angamaha Paaviththukolligintradu. Adhe Poonr, Ovvaru Tanimanudanum, Mattr, Tanimanudarudiyav Vaavvuy, Tanilrundu Veerupaduthiparpadu L. Tan Vaavvuy Veeru, Mattravaruudiyav Vaavvuy Veeru, Enra Veerupaduthiparpadu, Ille. Adhanala, Mattravonre, Tan Adayaveendum, Enkintra, Oru Sense Of Possession, Anga Adu Mariyavadigintradu. Ading Edhunnilaya, Edhunnilaya Hamaariyavadigintradu. Nige Bhavan Enna Kurigintara Endral, In The Irundavathanilai La, Kanaakkoodiya Vaavvin Seyalvadugel Illami, Adhanudaya, Oru Nirey Verya Nilaike Mariyavadigintana, Mondravathanilai La, Oru Manam Valachyadhananilai La, Seyalvadumborudhu. Oru Fulfilled, Ah, Statusaga, Ah, Oru Nirey Verya Nilaihalaga Mariyavadigintana, Abdingra Bhavan Nige. Idellam Parinamavallachyila Vaavvil, Seal, Ka, Vaavvil Narayuberekoodiya, Ah, Nigavugel. Adhe Poonr, Indha Karthi Nampa, Padhaa Paathamna, Oru Tanimanudan, Tanudaysudandarathay, Nilaynavatikkollav Avan Virumbikintra. Adhe Poonr, Ah, The Mutual Association, Anbu Sahodaratvom, Natpurumaydan Moramaha, Tanay, Oru Otthumathamayapu, Amayapodan, Tanay Avan Varanagikintra. Orubaram, Tanay Nilayneerithukolligintran, Mattr, Mattr, Mattrorubaram, Tanay Varanagikintra. Idhe Erak, Idhe Irundaknidaigila, Manid, Ovvaru Manid, Oh, Manidhan Enna Seigindran Endral, Oru Otthisayav Eerpaduthigintra, Oru Balance, Oru Samanilai Avan Eerpaduthigintra. Oru Nyayamaha Iruthal, Oru Parasparam, Parimatramp, Oru Samanilai Undakkutal, Idan Moramaha, The, Oru Tanimanudan Enkittan Nilaikum, Oru Otthumathan Nilaikum, Idakkum Edhigila, Oru Manidhan Unde, Oru Otthisayav Avan Eerpaduthigintra. Idellami Unde, Manamangintra Amayapu Unde, Adhanudaya Oru Uyeru Vidhiyal, In The Seyalvadugel Narayubirigintran. Anan, Bhavaninga Enna Kurigintara Endral, Idellam Unde, Oru Iridhiana, Andhavthisayav, Harmony, Real Harmony, Abdingra, Eppri Mudiyam Abdiina. Mindai Kadandhu, Manadai Kadandhu, Andhathimam, Andha, Andhanilai La Dan, Harmony Enradhi Manidhan Adayambidiyam, Abdingra, Idellam Unde, Otthisayavay, Otthisayavay Nokki Manidhanittusellum, Vadigal Daan Ivuyya. Iridhiana Manidhan Unde, Harmony, Otthisayav Eerpadavendum Endral, Avan Manadai Kadandhusellavendum, Adhimana Nilaike Sellavendum, Enra Bhavan Kurigintra. Vaavvu Nampa Paatham, Nambrudiyah, Letchiam, Goal Of Life. Vaavvin Ilakk. Idha, Eppri Nam Adayambidim Endral, Manam Tanay Kadandhusellum Borudhu Daan, Vaavvin Ilakkay Adayambidiyam, Idhu Unde Bhavan Udaya, Oru Adipadikaruthu, Bhavan Unde Thirippu Thirippu Thirippu, Ellaadathile, Bhavan Unde, Eng, En, Yavarudiyah, Ella Padepigalilil Irkkakoodiya. Ella Padepigalilum Oru Adinadamaha, Ah, Nam Kanaakkoodiya Karuthu Ennavendral, Manidhan, Tarpothulla Neela, Ulla, Andhamanamangintra Nilaiyav Avan Kadandhusellum Borudhu Daan, In The Vaavvilavundu, Deviha Vaavvu Satyappadavam, Abdingra. Apporudha Vaavvinudaya, Anitha Prachanigalkum, Oru Poooranamana Oru Thiruvu Kadikkum, Perfect Solution Kadikkum, Abdingra. Adu Unde Ipaparkaranilai La, Ipapamba, Ipap, Bhavan Solukkodi Nilaihalna Irkkintradu. Mutual Association Irkkintradu, Parimatramp Narakkintradu, Ah, Anbu Celutthudal Narayubirigintradu. Manam Saarundha Anbu, Manatthay Saarundha Seyalvadugel Irkkintradu, Verum Unachigal, Heart, Idai Saarundha Seyalvadugel Narayigintran. Anan, Idellam, Idellam, Idellalam Matthanam Unde, Perfect Solution To Life Kadikadadhu, Abdingra. Perfect Solution To Life, Eppri Kadikkam, Abdiina, The Vaavvu, Nonkaavathanilai Adayamborudhu Daan Kadikkam, Abdingra, Bhavan Solukkodi Thiruvadu Daan. Namby Enna Da Unde, Systems Maathi, Thirippu Thirippu Kondavantanaamkoda, Permanent Solution Kadikadadhu. Permanent Solution Eppa Oruna, Only By Change Of Consciousness. Manidhan Unde, Mental Consciousness Kandhu, Supramental Consciousness Gogumborudhu Da, Entire Life Kandhu, Thiruvu Kadikkam, Manidharukulathirkut Thiruvu Kadikkam, Abdingra. Adu Daan Bhavaninga Unde Fourth Status, Fourth Status, Abdingra. Apponde, Edhin Adipadigilallami Amikappadigintran, Amikappadigintradu Endra. Ah, Mind, Mind Adipadigilakadayadhu, Pranamethan Adipadigilakadayadhu, Physical Levelakadayadhu, Adu Edhu, Adu Ella, Ellaavichikum Oru Adipadiyaha Amikintradu Endral. Unity And Freedom Of The Spirit. Aanmanin Oru Sudandiram, Aanmanin Ottrumay, Idhan Adipadigiladhu Illami Amayap, Amikappadigintradu. Idhan Adipadigil Amikappadigintradu, Adu, Amikappadum Amayapugel Daan Unde, Nirandaramana Vaavvitkupachanigali, Solution, Solution To The Problems Of Life. Vaavvin Prachanigalkukni Nirandaramana Thiruvay Alikkum, Enra Karthodan, In The Chapter Twenty One, Modigintradu. Le, Vera Karthikla Solunona Solalala Nige. Oru Irundu Mukyamana Announcements, Ah, Nige Nan Kuravirumbikintre. Onre Ennavendral, August Fifteenth Nekki Bhavan Udaya, Ah, Birthday Anniversary Parigintradu. The August Fifteenth Nekki, Ah, Sunday, Adhanala, The August Fourteenth Saturday, Ah, Vaadkamaha, Nambrudiyah, Maali Saturday, The Satsang, Ah, Sarpurivu, Narayubitthukollu Varigintradu. Adarkaha, Andhha, Sireppu Sarpurivaha, Andhha, Sanikalamay Unde, Ah, Namodale, Doctor Alokpoundi, Avaridham Pese Time La, Na Vange Vaachirunna. Ah, Ekaranathinalo Enna Ayatchabdiina, Andha Time Slot, Evening Five Thirty, Andha Time Slotla, Ah, Avaral Kalanthukollam Mudiavale, Ena, Avar Unde Delhi La, Delhi Ashram, Andhanertal Undu Oru Webinar, Irkkardanala, Avarala Kalanthukollam Mudiavale. Adhanala, Andha, Sireppu Sarpurivu, Ah, Fourteen Nekki, Eight O'Clock, Eight To Nine, Amikappadoluvu. Ah, Konjya Ellaarmee Kalanthukollavirumbikintre, Endral, Avar Undu Remba, Nalla, Aarundha Edhu, Ah, Nyanamudiyaver. The Bhavan Udaya Perandanal, Unde, Namala Neeradhyav, Ava Nareyapengasentranga, Shorbindha Society Engalala Terakkamidile, The Government Guidelines Naala, Velisa Ninayir, Vadipatthu Talangalavundu Mudiavika Solirikkaraang. Adhanala, Idellam Unde Bhavan Udine Neevhalda Unde Nampa, Thoyindha Aarundhe Irkakalukku, Idumari Nalla, Ah, Bhavan Anney, Noolhalda Unde Nalla, Ah, Nyanampetralodipechikketto Abdiina, Andhha Consciousness Kandhu Remba Irkkamidiyam, Adhanala, Andha, Ah, Saturday Meeting, Indhadaravam Matthanam, Konjya Late Avandarkavare Vadiilai Namulukku. Adhanala, Avarudiyah Savariyam Karthi, Eight Of, Eight To Nine Vaachirukkum, Ah, Tavaramal, Kalanthukollu, Kalanthukollam Mar, Anith, Ah, Fellow Participants, Anivariyam, Anivariyam Naatkettukolligintre. Apparaduttha Enna, Inno Oru Announcement Enna Abdiina, In The, Next, In The Sunday, Nambrudiyah, Live Divine, Ah, Session Irkukum, Namby Chapter Twenty Two, Ullapola. Varra, Adutka, Kaduttha Wednesday Unde Session Irkkadhu, Ena, Na Unde, Ah, Anne, Kondhu Na Velinadha Siligintre, I Am Going To, Ah, England Poran. Ah, Ngupoyitna Sunday Lavande As Usual, Andha, Sunday, Andha, Andha, Wednesday, Anne Ki Na Unde Travel Pantrane, Adhanala, Anne Ki Mudiyadhu. Andha Sunday Unde As Usual, Illami, Illa, Live Divine Meetings, Satsang Meetings, As Usual, Endhavidamana Matronumay Irkkadhu, Adu Continue Aho. The Wednesday Matthanam, Ah, Nam, Ena, Anne Ki Na Travel Pantradhanala, Enala, Anne Ki, Live Divine, Mudiyadhu, Mattrapadi, Anithame Thodaram. The Irundu Announcements I Want To Make. Yaar Karthu Thiruvikunna, Abdiina Thiruvikunna.
Thank You Sir, Thank You For Your Arrangements On Saturday And Continuation On Letter.
Sir, Na Shamla Keelkalama, Sir?
Ah, Solun, Madam.
Sir, Nige London Bhavanavarande Edangathukupopathuk, Umlukor Vaayipu Kadichiruku.
Ama.
Yes, Avar Irundha, Talangalapathinganna, Engal, Ella Sarbuliyav, Prayer Palniitavaram, Indhal, Paarunva, Sir.
Yes, Yes, Madam, Eng Oru Bookay Irkku Avar Udaya, Avar Vaarande Edangalapaththi Oru Bookupotthukkanna, Oru, Na Paathan, Na Andha Bookirunda Vangeeta, Avar, Avar, Avar Irundayedon, Avar Padchesschool, Adhalan Na Paakavirumbikintre, In Fact. Ah, Na, Neeravandha Na Poitavaranan, Poitna Photo Alan, Anuparanan.
Okay, Okay, Ella Sarbuliyav Fight Vange.
Fight Or, Madam, Thank You Madam, Thank You.
Thank You Sir.
Sir, Angi Situations Konjya Idathaa Irkku, Onnu Normal Varla, Adhanala, Angi Konjya Care Attukonga.
Kandipa, Sir, Kandipa, Na Undu Remba Kalanthuk, Na Remba, Jakardaya Da Arpanan, Ah, Adiyam Veliestey Vadi, Selli Vadi Vaayipmanakangakadayadhu. Ah, Ena, Anga Panakodu Idhey Vela Dan Sayyaparun, Aar, Namby Irkkariyadan Da Marthi Vadiya, Namby Sindenigal Illami, Mother And Shorbindha Da Center Namulukku, Adhanala, Andha, Namulukka Adhal Da, Idhal Da Neerav SeriAarukkam Enakvaang. Anan, Jakardaya Kandipa, Nandri, Umludiyah Alosuniknanri, Ra, Echarikyodarodha Na Anga, Angiyo, Echarikyodha Na Anga Irpponanga. The Saturday Satsang Matthan, Anivariyam Kalanthukollavirumbra, Konjya Late Na Na, Dayasenja Porutpaduthavena, Ena, Adu Unde Namakellam, Unna La Vaayip, Bhavan Udaya Birthday Udaya, Eve, On The Eve Of His Birthday, Andha Unar, Andha Consciousness Ra, Namby Unde, Aarumah Selvadarke, Avar Doctor Alokpoundi, Avarudiyah Page, Unde, Namakellam Oru Nalla, Ariyavai, Ena, Avar Remba Busy Person. Ah, Anne Kondhu, Mindyav, Otthiktaray, By Chance, Avar, By, Tavirkamidiyadhu Karanathinala, Avarala Evening, Five Thirty To, Five To Six Thirty Kalanthukamidile. So Eight O'Clock, SariA, Paravaliyabdiinadhu, Na Okay, Abdiin Solitain, So Dayasenja, Ka Nam, Ellaarmee Kalanthukala, Konjya Neeram, Ah, Adhle, Late Da Arkuk, Eight O'Clock, Konjya, Late Tham Padirindhan, Adha PorutPaduthavendam, Adutthanal Undu Oru Mukyamana Naal. Andha Naal La, Namby, Andha Correct Kind Of Consciousness La Irkkartuk, Indha, Sarpurivay Kairpada Unde, Namakumikum, Payanuladaha Aga Irkukum.
Nandi, Sir, Nandi.
Nandi, Nandi, Sir.
Karamba, Andha Session Am Odichkalan, Nekra, Nambe.
Play Padintre, Sir.
Yes, Madam, Thank You.
Om.